I have the authority vested hereby declare this meeting in the Concha Hockenborough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. Roll call?
Councilmember Totino. Councilmember Griffin. Councilmember Sokolowski.
Here.
Councilmember Barton is absent. Councilmember Stokely.
Here.
Vice President Flanagan.
Here.
President Leonard.
Here.
Mayor Aronson.
Here.
Thank you.
Mayor for council, please stand.
O divine master, in deep humility we place ourselves, our thoughts, and our plans in thy hands. We beg thee to fill our minds and our wills with the gifts of wisdom, understanding, counsel, fortitude, knowledge, and piety. Help us not to think of self or personal desires, but rather consider the responsibilities laid upon us. Help us to promote as far as possible the welfare of our people and treat them with impartiality and justice. Grant us the power to set a good example in thought, word, and deed, so that thy blessings will be showered upon us and the people we represent. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do have one announcement. We, council did have an executive session for a personal matter before our scheduled meeting. On that note, we have an added item to our agenda. I need to have a motion to the following disciplinary recommendation of the chief of police made in the executive session to terminate the employment of Officer Sean Malloy, and I will need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And I will need a roll call.
Councilmember Totino. Yes. Councilmember Griffin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sokolowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Stokely.
Yes.
Vice President Flanagan.
Yes.
President Leonard.
I will recuse.
Motion passes. And if we can note that Councilmember Barton is absent.
Okay, we are going to go directly into our presentations. The first item on the agenda is the 2018-19 insurance renewal options.
Tonight, there will be two presentations regarding the insurance renewal process. Our broker, Brown &amp; Brown, is here to present the borough options for renewal that he has. Additionally, there are representatives here from Divit that will present options available to the borough once Mr. Pugelli has done his presentation. We are limiting presentations by both parties to approximately 10 minutes, and then we will leave council Q and A available after each presentation. We will then conclude those presentations and questions and answers. We will move on with the rest of the agenda, and then we will make a decision regarding the borough's insurance renewal for the April 1st renewal date at the scheduled point on the agenda. Any questions in terms of procedure? Oh, okay.
Then, Mr. Pugelli, I turn it over to you.
I have a handout. Can I just?
You can give that to Brittany, and she'll disseminate it. Thank you.
Good evening. Glad to be back with you again. Thank you for having me back. So...
Thank you for changing your schedule.
What's that?
Thank you for changing your schedule.
Yeah. Yes, a couple of Wednesdays, we've had some interesting weather for spring now, no less. So, I guess tonight, I guess I'm just going to try and summarize what we've done. And in the time that I've been working with staff, we came in, we adhere to all the guidelines, the guidelines, et cetera, and I'm sure you have the figures in front of you. We have been able to generate a very substantial savings in really just about a matter of a month. It's about $100,000. My calculation is about $140,000, and stuff, that's kind of along your lines as well. But if we look at what you were paying last year to what we came in this year, it's about $140,000 less, and that entails getting several optional quotes that the borough had not received in the past. So, I guess really the choice before you tonight is you have two really, two completely different ways of purchasing insurance for the borough. One is a self-insured trust, which has 55 some odd members, and then we have the brokerage approach where we are your advocate, where we went out, we researched the market, we got a lot of quotes, we went back and forth between them, and we're able to come up with some numbers. So, again, so, you know, the other approach you're looking at, you know, there are other members in there, of course. Given that there are 3,000 public entities in the state, obviously, not everybody chooses to go that route. If I were to describe basically the way I see it, and I've listed the pros and cons here, and I might touch on some of these, but essentially, the trust approach, as I see it, is your premiums will probably be a steady sort of modest increase perhaps along those types of lines. You're probably not going to see in a trust a $140,000 drop in a year through a marketing effort. It's just not something that's going to happen if you talk to people in a trust. I'm sure no one's saying that they're saving that kind of money every year. So, I guess the way I see it is that you have an opportunity to take advantage of the marketplace in the traditional insurance market. And by that, we go out, and when the conditions are good, we are able to do things for the borough to get you more presentable, more marketable, more saleable, then we can get you lower quotes. The other way, essentially, you're sort of in it for the long haul. From my experience, the people that are in the trust, I've called on people who have been in there 15, 20 years, they're actually, a lot of them aren't even interested in looking at quotes, which I guess that piece does surprise me some. But that seems to be the approach that the people that are in there, it seems to go the way. It's not to say that you're going to do that, I'm just saying that typically is the case. And so, the way I see it is, is that in that regard, if you're comfortable with that and that's the way you want to go, then, fine. I look at it more like, you know, are you interested in there being competition? And really, when you're in a trust, there really is no competition. And so, you are in for a minimum of two years. I don't know what your numbers are for this year, but you have to be in for at least one other year. And then, there could be certain penalties even afterwards if you were to exit. So, I've outlined, you know, all the things on the pros and cons. You know, you do have certain things like the joint and sever liability, subject to assessments. Have they happened? I don't know. Could it happen? Absolutely. You know, obviously, I don't know, I haven't seen the audited financials of the trust, so I don't know if, you know, how solid it is. As a, if you consider it a mini insurance company, it's relatively small, as opposed to Travelers or Argonaut who has, you know, anywhere from three-quarters to a billion dollars in surplus. So, my thinking is that it, in the long run, it kind of has to be a little bit more expensive in a trust because they have to reserve higher because they don't have a billion dollars sitting in the bank for a catastrophic claim. So, again, I think that's where, long term, I think the rates would be somewhat higher in that regard. Again, some of the other things, you know, because it's self-insurance, it's not protected by the insolvency fund, which is simply, the insolvency fund is simply that you, if an insurance company goes bankrupt, then you can apply, if they go bankrupt and you have a claim, you can apply to the state insolvency fund, and you can get back money from that fund, which each insurance company pays a portion of their premiums into that in the event that one of them goes bankrupt. And it does happen. It does happen from time to time. So, we can provide all the services that the borough needs and have, and we put that all in our RRP, and I think everybody was pretty happy with that. How am I doing time-wise?
You're good.
Okay. And so, we've done all that. We can provide the risk management to keep those claims down. We've offered a lot of suggestions already. We prepared a safety manual. I'm totally confident we can provide all the service that the borough would need for that. So, again, I think it's just a matter of, you know, which way, you know, traditionally, the borough purchases the insurance this, the way through the brokerage system, and certainly, this year, it's worked really, really well in terms of the savings. So, it's just a matter of, you know, what you want to do going forward. Are you willing to assume some of the risks of going into that trust? I don't know if the agreements have been reviewed, that kind of thing, the financials have been reviewed. Unfortunately, you don't have a lot of time because this is your last meeting for the month, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, all things considered, it probably would have been better if you had probably had a little bit more time to think things through. So, I just think that what we offer is choice. What we offer is flexibility. If you run into a problem with one company, we have other companies we can go to. You run into a problem with a trust, there really, generally speaking, is only one option, and that would probably be expulsion. Not to say this is going to happen, I'm just saying that, just the dynamics of it are different. So, again, I think we've done everything we can. We demonstrated we can save the borough money. Now, I guess it's just a matter of which way the borough wants to go long-term in terms of your purchasing. Obviously, you can go into the trust at any time. Typically, once you're in, it's a little more difficult to get out. So, with that, I don't know what more I could really say. I've done everything I thought we can do. I would be more than happy to answer any questions.
So, I, one of my questions, Paul, and I guess I'll just start by saying that it's been a pleasure to work with you, and we appreciate everything that you've done through this, like you said, a very tight timeline. So, can you just confirm for council that if we're looking at our expiring Travelers package and the renewal package with Travelers that you presented, that the savings that you are presenting this evening is approximately $27,000? So, you're looking at a package expiring at 572, 473 approximate, and a renewal that you're presenting for Travelers at around the $544,000 package? Is that accurate?
Well, that's the Travelers renewal.
Right, so I'm just, I'm going to start with Travelers first.
Yes, that's correct.
And can you explain for council where those savings are that you've been able to get the borough?
Well, the savings are a little bit of everywhere. I mean, there's some savings in the commissions that were paid, and by the way, I will say that our, the percent that we have, the percent that we collect of the total premium is 6.2%. From documents I've seen in the past, well, I guess the question would be to ask is, how much does the administrator for the trust get? You know, are they getting 6.2% of the premium, or are they getting more than that? My information is they're getting more than that, so I don't quite see where the savings is there. But yet, so, it's partly there, partly in the workers' comp, which we were able to negotiate. So, what happened was, we had numbers from Travelers, but then when we started getting numbers from the other company, we went back to Travelers, Travelers lowered their rate. Now, as it stands, it's really still no comparison. Our optional quote, which is the exact same coverage that you have now, is over $100,000 less than the Travelers quote. I mean, so...
Right, so I guess then my next question is, because, so, in preparation for this presentation, we did a premium comparison and a coverage comparison. Can you go over a little bit what Argonaut and Brick Street and how that compares to the Travelers package, just so council can understand their compare, in terms of comparing the two?
I'll start with workers' comp. Workers' comp is the easiest coverage, well, at least in the traditional market, to compare because all the benefits that are provided by workers' comp are statutory. So, no matter what company you're with, what insurance company you're with, I can't say I know exactly how it works in the trust, but no matter what insurance company you're with, it's the same statutory benefits. We will pay claims to people who are injured, their medical, and their lost time. So, workers' comp is exactly the way you have it. Now, I will say also that the workers' comp figures that we're quoting actually include higher payrolls. So, if it was a true apples-to-apples basis, that 441 would be more like 421 because we're using about $200,000 more in payroll than we did compared to last year. So, it's a little bit of an apples-and-oranges. So, I mean, the true saving is probably more like $160,000, but if you look at the rates. And then, we were able to generate a little bit of savings on some of the other policies because of the difference in commission and just negotiation. So, then, on the Argonaut quote, this is another company that we do business with, we have an exclusive arrangement with, and you could clearly see that they're substantially less than Travelers. And that is their, and these are the kinds of rates we get from them, and not just once a year, one time, I should say, we get those kinds of rates. You know, we're seeing anywhere from 1% to 3% increases for our clients.
So, is it an apples-to-apples comparison if we're looking at, let's just say, real and personal property with Travelers and what you've presented us in terms of the renewal? Is it the same exact cover? Because we don't, I don't have that information, so is it the same exact coverage?
It is.
Is Argonaut offering the same?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, and just so you know why that is, is because our internal quality control procedures dictate that we have to match what you have, and if we don't, we disclose what's different. That's just something within our corporate quality control department.
Okay.
And actually, there is one thing of great significance in the Argonaut proposal that is better, and that thing is called a silo umbrella limit. And what that means is, the typical umbrella is a $5 million umbrella, which could apply over a general liability claim, auto claim, public official, police liability, any liability policy. But the typical umbrella, once you use that $5 million, it's gone. The way Argonaut works it, you get $5 million over general liability, $5 million over public official liability, $5 million over law enforcement, $5 million over automobile. So, you could have a $5 million public official claim, but still have umbrella left for those other policies. So, it's really like a $25 million umbrella with five separate silos of five. So, that is their biggest selling point. Now, hopefully, no one's going to have more than one $5 million claim a year, but it's way more coverage in that regard. And everything else? Everything else, we matched.
Okay. Is there anything that, in your opinion, council should consider with a, when comparing a package with Travelers? And then, having two different entities provide property liability and workers' comp?
Mm-hmm.
Anything that they should be thinking when they're making their decisions?
Yeah. Well, I mean, we do that all the time. It just depends on who's got the, you know, it doesn't make sense to spend another $100,000 to have it all with the same company. It just, it just doesn't make sense to do that. You know, if it's close, that's fine, but it just doesn't make sense. What we look at is not so much, we don't look at so much of the volume that we have with one municipality with a company. We look at the volume that we, as an agency, have with a company. And I can tell you what Argonaut, not only do we have a large volume in Pennsylvania, we have a ton of business with them in other states like the Midwest. And so, we are one of their largest, if not the largest, producer of insurance for them in the country. And so, that's what we like. We like having leverage. And so, we go to companies where we have, we leverage our national presence, and then we get good local rates.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Anything, any other questions?
Anyone from council? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Next presentation for your insurance renewal, our representatives from Delaware Valley Trust. We have the executive director here, Mr. Solars. And we have the senior consultant for insurers, buyers' counsel, Mr. Thompson. Did I get that correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, like we spoke earlier today, we'll give you time to present to council any information that you think you want to know, and then we'll open up the floor for any question and answer. Okay?
Well, first off, thank you very much for the opportunity to be before Borough Council this evening. Jim is our, is the trust underwriter and has worked with staff over the last eight weeks or so on the application and throughout the underwriting process. And as a result of that, he's evaluated everything in thorough detail and then enabling us to prepare a proposal, which I believe you have included in your packets this evening. First, just a little background on the trust. The first, the Delaware Valley Trust are made up of three separate entities. The Delaware Valley Health Trust, of which the borough is a member of and has been since 2009, and then the Property Liability Trust, and also the Workers' Comp Trust. A couple of things that I would ask that you take note. Number one is that we're nonprofit entities. So, what would regularly be considered profit or taken as profit by a commercial insurer goes back to our members, and you've experienced that type of thing with the Health Trust. It also works the same way with the other two trusts. So, those benefits, you know, whether there are dividends or funds to help stabilize rates over the long term, all accrue back to the members. The origins of the trust were in the late '80s, there was a hard insurance market, meaning that it was difficult to get cost-effective insurance coverage at reasonable prices, and a group of municipal managers, people that work in local government and serve, like council and your staff, got together and developed this trust model. So, this was developed by local government leaders, and it's always been focused and designed around the needs of local government. So, we're a little bit different in that regard. We have worked with the borough over the last few years. There was an interest in going into considering the Property Liability Trust and also Workers' Comp Trust back in 2016. We met with the former manager. Our risk control people did a very detailed review and made some recommendations. And then, fast forward to a couple of months ago, we were contacted by your current manager who somehow or another grabbed that memo and started working on implementing a number of these recommendations. So, that leads us to where we are here today. I think it would be probably a good idea to at least let Jim go through the scope of coverage and a few of the other fine points of the proposal in summary fashion.
Thanks, Bob. Just so you know, I'm not trust staff. I work for a company called Insurance Buyers Council, and we are insurance and risk management consultants. We do a lot of work with pools such as the trust, but we also do work for public entities like county governments, or colleges, or whatever. And what we, I'm taking off my trust hat right now, and I'm putting on my consultant hat, and I'm just trying to give you a little something to frame this proposal analysis and decision you have to make. When we're consultants, we look at four criteria: scope of coverage, financial stability, services, and net cost. Those are kind of the be-all and end-all. We don't get into the politics or other things like that. Those are our criteria, so when we do our analysis letters, that's front and center in our analysis letters. And again, still with my consultant hat on, granted, I may be biased, but looking at the scope of coverage and comparing the scope of coverage, I think you got a coverage comparison that we did with the expiring program. I feel very strongly that the trust offers a broader scope of coverage that's frankly tailored for municipalities. And then, there's also one other coverage that is not in your current program that we offer when you join Delaware Valley Property Liability Trust, and that's Hart &amp; Langac coverage. That could mean lots of money for you guys, and that's $100,000 annual aggregate limit there. The financial stability, Bob alluded to it earlier. It start, this, the trust grew out of the heart market in the late '80s. The Property Liability Trust started formally in 1989, and then the Work Comp in 92. They are stable, healthy surpluses, good financial ratios. It's been really a good, this is the way pooling is supposed to work. I'm biased, but this is the way pooling should work. The services, again, you're getting tariffed services. You're also working with claims handling by experts who, again, are used to working with municipal claims, just municipal claims. They're not a commercial insurer dealing with the broad spectrum of all sorts of different types of insurers. And then, on the risk control staff, Steph's already aware of this and has dealt with Peter Erdwin, our director of risk control, excellent staff, again, tariff for municipalities. And then, the net cost, you know, workers' comp has been the bugaboo for you guys for many years, and you now are at a point with that lower experience mod and with the commitment to risk control that you are making, that the council is making, the executive committee decided to step up and give you a vote of confidence to doing that. And overall, when you join all three trusts, you get the benefit of the multi-trust discounts, and just the whole package works much better that way. And the workers' comp is clearly much more favorable as well from a pricing perspective, even though we are, you should be aware, we are debiting your workers' comp premium rates by 15% because of your history. But frankly, that gives you something to choose for, you know, with the risk control measures and improving your losses, we, that debit, if you will, that 15% surcharge will hopefully come down over time. I stole some of Bob's thunder, but go ahead, Bob. Do you want to say anything else at this point?
Yeah, sure. I think it's important, too, that this application was different than any that I can remember because before, like I said, we looked at it, but the mods were so high, and there were a number of other complicating factors, and we just couldn't make this work. But, one, we were contacted recently by your manager. We saw the commitment that she had secured from council. I had the opportunity to talk to some of your council members there at the facility for training. It was pretty clear to me that things had changed. The commitment was there, and the commitment from the elected officials was there. So, we were very enthused about, again, the opportunity of bringing Concha Hocken in to all three trusts. I jokingly refer to it as the triple trust club. But as Jim pointed out, there are obviously some advantages from being involved in all three trusts. The other thing, too, I guess, is, you know, from a standpoint of, and I know Jim talked about, we talked about the multi-trust discount, but one of the reasons that entities join and they typically stay is because over time, the benefits get better. In other words, from a financial standpoint, what would normally be considered profit goes back to the members in forms of cash dividends, but also in what we call a rate stabilization fund. And those amounts can be left in that account and used for a rainy day, or they can be applied. It takes a few years to get to the point where you get those rate stabilization funds, but that's part of over, it's what we typically say, look, this is a long-term play or a long-term commitment because over time, the rewards get better. So, again, this isn't a year-to-year transaction. This, we are set up for a long-term relationship and a partnership, and that's why we can make the investments in training. We do a significant amount of training. We do the risk control services for property liability. We offer a lot of training, for example, for law enforcement that you don't find in the commercial market. All these things are investments, but we feel they're good investments because, again, we're looking at it from a long-term view. because, again, we're looking at it from a long-term view. And those are the things that help drive down the mods, things that help reduce injuries, that people that are injured get back to work, things of those natures. So I know you have other things on the agenda, so we'll try to wrap up.
I just have one last final comment. Contrasting the trust with commercial insurers, when you join the trust, you're an owner. That makes all the difference, because then you're reaping the benefits. When you pay those commercial insurance premiums, that's it, it's gone, it's out the door. You're not getting anything back because you don't own that commercial insurer. So just keep that in mind, it's a totally different approach to your risk management insurance needs.
We'd be pleased to take any questions if that's appropriate.
Anyone on council?
I'm good.
I just have one question. I understand that you are selected in determining who you will entertain, which benefits the whole group, it gives you the rate stabilization. And so we're very happy that this is an offer for us. The question, and we're doing on our side, through advice, through the recommendation, to implement the light duty for the return to work as well as the semi-automated trash collection. So those in mind gives us reason to believe that we should be the stability and taking these different, the advice in play. Is there any concern that should something happen, that we have some type of high claim, that we could possibly be removed and no longer eligible to be in the program? And then we'd be, we'd have the challenge of trying to go on the outside to get, secure some coverage, and we'd really be in a tough spot? Has that happened? Is that anywhere a concern, like just in terms of budgeting? So we see that this could be a nice savings now, but what could happen down the road?
I've never seen it. When you're in?
You're in.
You're in. And if you have a situation where you have poor developing loss situation, loss experience, we're going to work with you
Okay.
to turn that around. We're not throwing you out the door. Clearly, there could be some really awful situation where the trust has to preserve that right. But I just don't see that. I've never seen it happen
Okay.
in the 25-plus year history
Okay. Okay, good, good.
When members have left, it's because they, with all due respect, change in politics and supervisors and they've decided that they need to do something else. We've only had four members leave since 1989, which is remarkable.
But just to add to that a little bit, we had a situation, we had a very unfortunate claim last, late last year, and a fatality and a severe injury. And, you know, we, our first thing was, we surrounded that municipality with, you know, with EAP-type, you know, support, any kind of support that we needed, whether it was legal or what they needed, whether it was legal, you know, psychology, every, anything. So that's our approach to that type of thing. And yes, it's a big claim and it's a big dollar amount, but that's the business that we're in. So, and they're not kicked out the door, we just, we'll just help them.
Okay, good, thank you, because obviously in our position, we have to be concerned for budgets and we don't want to be blindsided at some point.
I'll tell you that if you were to put it, throw it out to the trust, commercial insurance would be there, but at what price?
Right, exactly, exactly. Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Anyone else on council have any questions? Ms. Chekov?
I just have a few clarifying points that I'll ask as a question. So just to confirm, the Borough belonging to all three trusts leads to decreased pricing and that you've touched on it through the multi-trust discount. And that's reflected in the pricing that's in front of council tonight that has resulted in the net cost of 410, approximately $410,000. And the Borough will continue to reap the benefits of the multi-trust discount considering the fact that we get the discount for being in the Health Trust right now and now will potentially be in all three. Okay. The rewards of membership in the trust are the dividends, the rate stabilization funds, and the safety grants. There is, in fact, in your proposal, two safety grants, one for property and liability and one for Workers' Comp that will be immediately eligible for.
Correct, right.
Okay, and those will-
1,500 a year.
Okay, for both. And those will continue to be available during our tenure, should we be members of the trust? And those rate stabilization funds roll into the next year. We do not lose them, just like we don't lose them with our Health Trust.
Correct. So the trust makes a whole allocation, say, a million five to the rate stabilization fund. And then that is allocated amongst the membership based on profitability and how the loss experience, as you can imagine. And then once that portion is there, that's yours to apply to future premiums, whenever you decide to do it. If you have a large increase in pricing when you're due to an increase in mod, you can take that and keep your premiums stable.
That's one of the designs of the trust that is found in local governmental leaders contemplating. Because the worst thing you want is
Spikes.
You don't like spikes in budgeting. So rate stabiliz, you know, stabilization is of paramount importance.
One other quick point, and this is an underwriter talking, so you'll have to forgive me, but just talking about the variability. And one of the things that we decided to do to help with budgeting for the members is we do a smoothed mod process where we take the five, the current mod and the four previous mods, and we take a weighted average of that. There's a bit more weight to more recent years and experience. But what that weighted average does is it helps to suppress the swings and make your budgeting more stable. So it's a smooth out the swings, that's what we call a smoothed mod.
As opposed to a three-year look?
As opposed to the typical insurance company approach, which is three years of experience and then you have large swings in mod. Like right now, you're benefiting greatly because you have that large decrease in mod. That's great, but you could have a large increase in mod, and that would be suppressed with our smoothed mod approach. Again, the goal being just stability, just like all your other members in the trust.
So I just want to make sure for council that I'm reiterating the fact, because I've had the privilege of talking to both of you tirelessly over the last couple of weeks. But can you confirm that, in fact, what you're presenting for council's consideration this evening is broader and more comprehensive scope of coverage than what we currently have with travelers right now? Which also includes a factor of heart and lung act liability, which we don't currently have. And that is still coming under the price of our existing travelers and what is in front of them this evening in terms of a renewal?
It's under the price of the renewal travelers, actually.
Yep.
And we're comparing the expiring scope of coverage with ours because that's the policies that we have, obviously. And yes, I can confirm that on an overall basis, the scope of coverage is broader. The liability limits are higher, the crime limits are higher. There's always going to be little things where one program might be better than another. But again, with my insurance consultant hat on, you have to look at the, you have to weigh those items and, you know, looking at the cat kind of exposure, you want those higher limits for crime and the liability. And the property program, you also have a much better program as well. There's a number of things there in the property program that, like, in comparison to your expiring.
So one of the main attractions from an administrative perspective is the concept of the value-added benefits that come along with the membership in the trusts. We already have those value-added benefits through the Health Trust, meaning that we have direct connection to Divot staff. We can actually drive to the office if we need to. We can have employees visit the health center if we need to. That same level of service and that same level assistance from Divot staff would be available to the Borough in helping the Borough setting its own internal risk management policies and procedures, which is something we, is an initiative on our end.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we're set up, again, just to clarify, our claims, that's in-house, that's our staff. Risk control, that's our staff, it's in-house. Legal, in-house. So all those things, again, they're focused on municipal operations. They're 27 minutes away from this building with traffic.
Can I ask a question? Currently, for HR and our legal, are we paying that separately from another vendor for legal assistance that this would then cover? So would there be costs that would, we would also see down the road that could be unintended consequences?
Correct.
Okay, and then the EAP company we currently use, this would replace that?
So the EAP that we're currently using was to generate the emergency action plan, and then we would be utilizing Divot regarding how we would implement, or should we be looking at it in a different way of how we're implementing it in the Borough of Conshohocken, specifically as it relates to risk and safety measures?
So from an emergency management perspective, if we went in that direction, we know that we have put aside some money for emergency management training and preparedness. Is there additional opportunity through Divot for other training where it wouldn't be necessarily an out-of-pocket? Or is this an à la carte menu where if we want this training, it's this price, if we want that training?
Most of the training is free. And for example, the issue that you raised, like critical incident management, is actually a topic that's coming up in our health retreat that will be held in the end of June. And it'll be presented by a gentleman from HMS, that's our health advocate, that's our EAP partner. And health advocate is, those services are available to Conshohocken Borough. But in addition to that particular training, we do have a very comprehensive catalog and schedule of training that goes across all three trusts. And since, assuming that council approves this proposal this evening, then, you know, the Borough and Borough staff would have access to that training catalog. There are a couple that there's a small fee, like $25 or something, if we have to bring in outside, you know, speakers and it's more costly. But by and large, most of them are free.
So there's actually an annual manual that Divot publicizes every year, and it's all of the trainings that they offer. We just haven't been able to take advantage of the property liability and the Workers' Comp and the trainings that are associated with membership in those trusts.
Gotcha.
And then my last question is, since this is different than commercial insurance, just for council's knowledge, can you just go through what that process would look like if we were to go in the direction of Divot and what it would be required for us to actually initiate membership?
Well, there's the, you know, we have the, I guess we have the list of items that need to be done from a standpoint of an ordinance for each of the, of each of the trusts, of the two trusts. There would also be the execution of a trust agreement, which is an intergovernmental agreement. And that is the basis of how we're able to organize and operate the trust is through the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Act. So there'd have to be an acknowledgement of participation in the intergovernmental cooperation. And those are the, those are the two main things. There are a few other, what I call more minor housekeeping items. But from a council standpoint, those are the two things. Assuming that everything were to go through, one of the first things that would happen is we, our claims folks, claims and risk control would come out. We would meet with staff and key department leaders. And we would go through our program, we would instruct and teach everybody how to, you know, file a claim and all the things that are part and parcel to working with the trust. You know, who the people are, so you connect names and faces, we'd have points of contact. And then if there are things that come up as a result of those initial meetings, if there's certain policies that are needed or certain advice on, you know, say it's a matter with a treatment plan or something at one of the, one of your parks, things of that nature, we could drill down and look at those specific, those specific items. So the consulting and the assisting starts pretty much right away.
And just to clarify, having not even been a member of the trust, Peter did come out onsite and provide, I think it was an eight-page recommendation document of steps that the Borough should take to decrease our overall risk.
That wasn't the first time he was out, even.
Yes.
He'd been out prior, to try to guide the Borough into the trust, as well as the kid.
Right. And that happens every year, too. So right now, this time of year, you know, during, when we're getting 12 inches of snow unexpectedly, the risk control team is, you know, basically doing, you know, their paperwork and gearing up and getting their courses and training and things of those, that nature put together. But once the, you know, the spring and summer occur, we're going out, and every year we do risk control visits for all our members. Property and liability is one focus, Workers' Comp's another. We talk about emerging trends, if we see trends happening across the membership. You know, whatever the issues may be, we're helping our, we're trying to get out front and help our members, you know, deal with those issues, whether it's, you know, fentanyl, opioids, you know, things with law enforcement.
That's a minimum standard, this is the one visit we're doing for all the members. That means that Steph can pick up the phone anytime and call Peter and review a particular situation. Or Peter might have to come back out, it doesn't, it's not just once a year.
Right. And that's part of, we work for the members. And that's our interests and our members' interests are coincident. If everybody does their job, you know, there are fewer incidents, costs stay down.
I have one last thing, Steph. When do you usually get a renewal quote from your borough? Just in the past, do you think?
A final renewal?
Yeah, a final renewal quote.
It's usually around this week annually.
Right, okay, and April 1. So our members are, again, they're always worried about their budgets, right? So typically, what we do on the Property and Liability Trust, we're providing the next year's premiums. I'm sorry, I should clarify. When you join April 1, you will, that will be prior to until January 1, the trust year. And then you'll start up again on January 1. But you know, for that next year's premium, we're going to provide that on the Property and Liability side sometime around mid to late August, not a week before. So that, you can actually incorporate that into your budget. The Workers' Comp, it's a little bit later, there were some regulatory issues. And that's typically in September, is when we come up with an estimate. And that has to be validated or approved, if you will, by the Work Comp regulator. And we'll get that usually December, but that's not us, it's the Work Comp regulator that we have, the process we have to go through. But we're giving you a fairly solid number back in September. And we've never had our, not had our rates approved by LNI, Labor and Insurance. So again, stability, we really work on that.
Duck tail in with the municipal operation and your calendar. We also try to provide at least an early look number for the Health Trust. You know, we try to get that out as soon as possible. Usually it's a, we'll figure here, and we always try to come in better. But just so that you have something to work and develop budget around.
I have another question. So we spent a lot of time talking about being a member and what the benefits are. But you also touched on we're part owner. So what does that really mean to us from a voice perspective in the Delaware Valley Trust? You know, is it a senior- You know, is it a seniority-based voice? Is it an equal voice to the rest of the owners? And then from a str- strategy perspective of where the trust is going, um, futuristically, is that something that you have to be a senior member of the trust to actually participate in, or is that something that, um, our leadership actually is part of, um, once we would decide to go into the trust?
Thank you for asking that question. That's a great question. Every member, uh, of, of the trust appoints a trustee, so you could technically have either one person that serves as the trustee for, assuming that everything goes through with, for all three trusts, or you could have three separate trustees. Most of the time, it's, it's, it's your municipal manager that's the trustee. So, every trustee has a vote. So, from, from the, the, the body of trustees, they elect an executive committee, an executive committee similar to, you know, the executive committee of, of council, they can execute on, on behalf of, of the trust, whether it's agreements, budgets, things of that nature. In addition, each trust ha- holds an annual meeting, just like any other entity, we publish an annual report, um, we go over the, the operations and performance of the trust, all the numbers, the, the audited financials, um, you know, things that have occurred, and where we're going from a strategic direction as well. And then, uh, we also hold, every year, one of the trusts holds a retreat, so, for example, this year, it's the health, it's the health trust is having its, its educational retreat, next year, it's the property liability trust, the following year, it'll be the workers' comp trust. Again, that's an opportunity to, there, we're dealing with mostly education of, of, of current issues, um, for example, we'll be doing one, uh, this health trust, in addition to critical incident management, we, uh, we have a topic on, on opioid issues, we have somebody from Bucks County, uh, drug and alcohol, the executive director there will be leading that. So, those are more kind of current, generative, forward, uh, type issues, um, but the business meeting, the annual, the annual meeting is where we talk a little bit more about where we're heading from a strategic, strategic direction. So everybody, everybody has a vote, and the votes are equal, and it's not a seniority thing.
You also lack the members of the executive committee at that annual meeting.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thanks for coming, and thanks for all your help in the process, it's much appreciated. So just to conclude the insurance renewal presentation, again, you have two options in front of you, you have the commercial broker option that is offering the Brown and Brown, the Travelers renewal, or the alternate option of Argonaut and Brick Street, and then you have the Delaware Valley Trust property liability and workers' comp option. Um, I, before we move on to the next presentation of the evening, um, I just keep in mind a few things as you're thinking about it, before we get to the point where we're actually making a decision, that this, if you are looking towards Divot, this is a long-term strategic decision. And we also have to uphold our end of what we promised them, which was specifically the light duty return to work and the semi-automatic, automated refuse collection with the hydraulic lifts, which we already have, and the tip trashcans, which we would need. I know that when we first presented the trip, the, I'm losing, the tip trashcan concept there is a financial component that is tied into that, um, however, if you're looking at an already a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar savings with going with Divot, then you can take that, in essence, money, um, and utilize it to start towards your initiatives, that will continue throughout the future. So, anything else from council before we move on to the next item on the agenda?
When do we have to make this decision?
Tonight.
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 Tonight's the decision. Okay, so we will move on to the next one, and we'll give you time to take in what you just, what was just presented to you, um, and then we'll revisit it at the end of the agenda. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Steph. The next item on the agenda is hearing regarding a waiver of off-street parking for fourteen East Fifth Avenue, the artist's loft.
Ms. Stettler.
Thank you. This is much simpler than what you were otherwise dealing with. Uh, this is a waiver of off-street parking for a small business in the Business Commercial Zoning District. It is a tiny little narrow property, um, at fourteen East Fifth Avenue. It, uh, the, the property has no way of putting off-street parking on it at this point, it was a thrift shop, it has been renovated, and the owner of the business is here tonight, Eileen Gray. Uh, it's going to be used for, um, consignment art and for body care products. We don't have the exact square footage of the property, so we can't say what would generally be needed, but Eileen is here to, to explain her business and to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Eileen.
Good evening.
Anyone on council have questions for Ms. Burcaski?
Just tell us a little bit about your business.
Um, it's just an artist consignment shop, so I have local artists who come in and display, and I sell their artwork for them.
To set up like timeshare?
No, no, there's no employees, it's just consignment, yeah, they bring it in to me and I sell it for them.
How many artists at a time could you?
Right now, I have about twenty-two. It, it varies, um, I try to, like, switch it up every couple months or so, add some new arts in there, different types.
Any type of art, specifically?
It has to be handcrafted.
Handcrafted art?
Mm-hmm.
It's great, it's exciting to have that in the community.
It is, it's wonderful, thank you.
Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Any more questions?
Yeah.
Uh, on that note, I would need a motion from council to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion to recommend approval to the zoning hearing board.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, consider final major subdivision and land development approval for four hundred West Elm Street, applicant Carson Street Acquisition LP. Please come up.
Mr. Peters, if you'd like to kick this off?
Thank you very much. Before council tonight is a resolution granting amended final land development approval. This property was before council before, back in two thousand fifteen, council approved a final land development plan for this property by, uh, resolution number twenty fifteen dash twelve. The property is located at four hundred West Elm Street, it comprises eight point two seven five acres within the Borough, and it's zoned SP three, there are one point eight four four acres that are located in Plymouth Township. Previously, the plan was approved for a three hundred twenty-four thousand eight hundred sixty square foot, seven-story office building over two levels of parking, and a six-level garage. The applicant is here tonight proposing a change in the height of both the office building and the height of the parking garage, but not a change in the footprint. That change is for a four hundred thousand square foot eight-story office building, again, over two levels of parking, and a ten-level parking garage. The applicant, in connection with this application, has requested no additional waivers. Council should note that in the previous land development resolution, there was a requirement for a public amenity, and specifically a comfort station. After that resolution, um, it was determined by prior council to change, um, that amenity into a lieu, a fee in lieu of a hundred and two thousand dollars, that is, again, what's being proposed tonight. The Borough Planning Commission this month recommended approval of the amended plan, subject to certain conditions. The resolution that I prepared for council tonight contains, uh, conditions that both the planning commission, my office and staff believes would, would be appropriate, uh, should this council grant approval of the final amended plan. Those are compliance with the terms and conditions of resolution number twenty fifteen dash twelve, um, except to the extent modified in the resolution, payment of the fee in lieu of a hundred and two thousand dollars for the public amenity. Applicant will explain that there is a, a ramp on the property that was previously proposed in connection with the trail system. Uh, if applicant does not construct that ramp, the applicant shall pay a fee in lieu that it, that is commensurate with the cost savings realized by not constructing that ramp. There's also an existing footbridge, which the applicant will explain to you that goes over Plymouth Creek. That footbridge is not on the applicant's property, so the resolution is limited to requiring the applicant to seek necessary approvals and permissions, obviously, if he, if they can't get the permissions, um, there's not too much we can do, but if they get the permission to improve that footbridge, the resolution requires them to improve it to your satisfaction. The applicant to effectuate the additional height of the office building needs a new height bonus, so, under your zoning ordinance, there, it provides for a height bonus, to get that height bonus, the applicant has to provide a public amenity. The applicant will tonight explain what is being proposed in terms of a public amenity. There is also the opportunity for council to accept a fee in lieu of that public amenity. Condition five requires the applicant to grant public easements over the trail system as proposed, as well as a maintenance and operation agreement. Condition number six requires the applicant to comply with the comments and review letters received from Borough professionals, uh, except to the extent as modified in the resolution or in subsequent reviews by your professionals. Those are the Borough engineer, the Borough zoning officer, the Borough traffic engineer, the Borough fire marshal, and the Montgomery County Planning Commission review letters. There's a requirement in the previous condition, I'm sorry, in the previous resolution, that the applicant work with the Borough to grant an easement or other arrangement for the public right to utilize portions of the surface parking. You have before you tonight a slightly different application, because what's being proposed, instead of a multi-unit use, as was proposed last time, this building is proposed for all four hundred thousand square feet to be occupied by one tenant. That tenant has safety concerns and security concerns, and so, um, we amended that condition to allow for the tenant the right to, um, approve of the, the use of surface area parking for public parking. That doesn't change another requirement, um, of the resolution where the applicant agreed to provide twenty public parking spaces. The applicant must execute a stormwater operations and maintenance agreement, land development escrow agreement, obtain all appropriate permits, um, obtain all approvals from outside agencies, pay all of our outstanding invoices, and comply with the terms and conditions of this resolution. With that, um, Mr. Dwyer's here tonight to present on behalf of the applicant, his, his attorney, Lou Colagreco, is also here. Thank you, gentlemen, for sitting through our insurance presentation. With that, Bob, why don't you walk council through-
Sure.
-the plan, the public amenities, I think you know what to focus on this evening.
Absolutely, thank you very much, and I appreciate everyone's time tonight. See if this thing works on the screen, probably doesn't, does it? Disappears on the screen, okay, well, I can walk to the screen and talk loud. Uh, what you see, uh, on the screen is the original board that we presented a few years back, when we first approached the, the council. It showed the same exact footprint as we are proposing this evening, uh, the only exception is we're going one additional, um, story higher. There's also some other changes along the way that have been made, uh, from this plan, from the point of final approval for the last plan. So, this plan was originally presented, and as you can see here, there's a, the, the trail was relocated along the river, here, let me orient you first, this is West Elm Street on the top, the river, obviously, you can see that, this is the railroad line, uh, along the base, this is the existing trail that goes right through the property, across a bridge, and into the, um, behind the grand, uh, condominiums. This plan, the original plan showed the trail being relocated along the river and hooking up to this location. It showed us eliminating the bridge, the railroad bridge that Mike just spoke of, at this location, and just putting like a ramp, uh, a, a wind, a, a, as turned down to the county trail. It also showed a comfort station at this location here, and it showed, um, um, otherwise it's exactly the way, uh, you know, what we eventually got approved. So, during the course of the approval process, um, the Borough opted out of the comfort station, and in, uh, in lieu of that, we provided a hundred and two thousand dollar contribution. Uh, we also, um, came to you and we asked if we could keep that bridge in place, the railroad bridge, it's an amenity, we thought it was an attractive thing that we could work with, county to try to maintain, so we put that back on the, on the table and got that approved, basically, the, the new plan, uh, showed this, this trail going across here. And, uh, we had a ramp structure at this location here, that's still in the plan, but I want to talk to you about that, that was a ramp structure for another access point to the trail. Otherwise, like I said, it's pretty much the same plan. So, what's happened since then, since that June two thousand fifteen approval of that plan modified, as I just described, uh, a new tenant, uh, came into play, uh, they want another seventy-five thousand square feet, and it was a multi-state competition, it's a Fortune fifty company, they want to relocate their headquarters to this spot, and we're the only place in the Borough that can meet their time constraints, and we're the only, probably the only, only two or three in the region that can meet their time constraints. We were, we're considered the number one position, but we need to find a way of getting seventy-five thousand square feet more in this building. The only way we could do that would be by adding an additional level of the building. We couldn't change the footprint, because it would change NPDS approvals, it would require a lot of different engineering, so we opted just to go up. Obviously, the zoning ordinance allows us to do that, provided we get another height bonus. Uh, the original height bonus, we, we offered, uh, the comfort station, and in lieu of that, we gave a hundred and two thousand dollars, uh, and when we came in, because of the time constraints, uh, I basically said, look, we'll give you double that, two hundred thousand. It's not quite double, we'll, we'll call it two hundred and four thousand dollars, we're going to give you, for this new, um, height bonus, uh, as a, as a fee in lieu of building anything. Uh, we'll also continue to give you the hundred and two thousand dollars that we offered, uh, originally for the comfort station, and we also will continue to offer the three hundred fifty-two thousand dollars of recreational fees that we, we offered, uh, originally. So, there's no, it's just, this is a, a new two hundred thousand dollar, um, offer being presented for this height, height bonus. Uh, and, so, in addition to that, I've also, and I've summarized this here, the three hundred fifty-two thousand dollar rec fee, a hundred and two thousand dollar comfort station, and, uh, the two hundred thousand dollars in lieu of, I show up there, a, a dog park, which I'm going to show you an idea for a dog park that, um, you may want to consider, uh, either building that, having us build it, or just taking the money and finding some other use for it. And the last thing is, I want to talk to you about is the ramp structure, there's a ramp structure that no longer need it, in my opinion, because of the bridge and the relocation of the trail, which I'll explain to you in a second. So these are the, basically, the contributions that we're making, that will end up, uh, being money in the, in the pockets of, of the Borough, uh, citizens, uh, the Borough coffers. Uh, in addition, we're also doing a significant amount of improvements to Fayette, and, uh, West Elm Street, there's a, there's a, a new, new turning lanes being proposed, new signals being proposed, it's a, it's well over a half million dollars of improvements that we're proposing along there. And on top of that, obviously, the, uh, the fiscal impact for this project will, will now exceed, for the Borough, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. It's over three million dollars for the Borough, the school district, and the county, per year, for this project. So, uh, it's got a lot of benefits, uh, for everybody here, including, hopefully, the, the Fortune fifty company who wants to, wants to call Conshohocken their home. This is the building, it, it's exactly the same way as was before, but it's one story higher. I'll scroll through this quickly, unless you want me to stop, I'd be happy to talk about it. Uh, this is from the riverside, looking at the, uh, at the building, again, the same architecture as before, just another story higher. This is the breakdown of the height requirements, it's the same image you saw before, only with another additional height. The maximum, uh, height now is going to be a hundred and thirty-five feet, we, we'll be, we'll be below that. There's the old building versus the new building. And, and this is the, this is an idea that we had for, um, for a park, if you wanted, I, I call it a dog park, it could be any kind of park, and it's, it's in the open space that, I should scroll back to the first, I should have shown you that originally, but wrong way. Still wrong way. Think I got it? Here we go. The dog park on, well, the park that I'm thinking about, there's a par, parcel ground here, it's owned, it's owned by us, uh, but it's in Plymouth Township, and what we're proposing is, we have twenty parking spaces that we're required to provide for the trail and for the public, and those parking spaces are, are located over here, in this general location. Uh, what we propose to do is dedicate, if you want, of this- What we propose to do is dedicate, if you want, this parcel ground to the borough. You can use for a park if you want. We give you the ground. We dedicate it to the borough, and we give you $200,000 to do whatever you want with it, to build the park, or we can build the park, whatever you opt to do. I know it's, you know, it's short notice to make a decision like this, and we're not looking for a decision this evening. We can, you can make this decision later on, but what I'm offering is $200,000 or we build the park. But in any event, we can give you this ground for your use or whatever purposes you want.
So $200,000 plus that space?
Plus that ground, yeah. The other plan, so I'm going to show you a picture of that park area here. The other idea that I present to you this evening is I want to take this trail and continue it to the parking spaces so that anybody who wants to go west on the trail can park here and walk down the trail access, past the park or past whatever, onto the trail here. That basically gives me a second grade access to the trail, which eliminates the need for this big ramp structure, which is, in my opinion, an attractive nuisance. I would get rid of that and give you the cost savings, another, you know, contribution to the borough. Because then I'd have this access.
How much would that be?
Well, you know, it's, I would say anywhere from $65,000 to $125,000 of savings, in that range. And the only, you know, typically you'd say, "Well, you know what the ramp structure costs." The problem is, when you get rid of the ramp, there's still a retaining wall along there I need to build, so I just need to work that out. But I'd work that with your engineers and give you the cost savings. But it would then eliminate what I think would be a problem for your police and everyone else to, basically, we turn into, I think, a skate park or anything else, you know? So we could eliminate that, have an access onto your, onto the trail heading west here, and as I'm going to show you in a second, we maintain the bridge, this footbridge that we talked about. Actually, it's an old railroad bridge, and you have access from this location. So let me go back to the dog park or the park and the trail system changes on this slide here. Okay? So this is, this is the parking lot that I was talking about where the cars are being, and this would be, I show a dog park. This is what it looks like right now, these pictures here. I show a dog park. I know that that was, I read some stuff and had some ideas and talked to some people. I thought that might be a good location for one. And again, it's obviously up to you, and we don't need a decision this night, tonight, but if you opted to do that and build it, or if you opted to just take the money, we would give you the ground, and you can build it later on, or you can put it in some other use.
How much space is that, that ground?
It's about, I think inside the gate's about, I think it's 5,000 square feet roughly. I have it here. Let me just give you the answer to that. The entire property is 34,000 square feet, and the area inside the park area is roughly 12,000 square feet. So it's, you know, but obviously, you can make that any size you want. This is just a snapshot of an idea.
Right.
We felt compelled to have to suggest something to you. Again, you know, years ago, we had more opportunity to talk about it and kind of develop an idea. This was just something that, because of the time constraints we're now under with trying to get this tenant to buy into our project, we wanted to give you something to at least latch on to and decide. Not tonight, although you're welcome to make a decision tonight, but at some time in the future. But we would like to be able to get the height bonus and lock that in so that we can then go back to the tenant and say, "Look, we are in a position to now break ground if we're so lucky." These are just some of the amenities that we showed on the plan that could be put there. This is another image of all the trails, and maybe you already know this. This is the cross-county trail that blew on. This is the relocated trail, the Scuba River Trail that we bring across, and that's going to be built. This pink section here would be the trail that would go through or near the proposed park or through this area that would be owned by the borough if you wanted. If you didn't want it, we would probably dedicate it to the county. They would like to take it. They actually want it, but I told them you had first dibs, obviously. You guys make the decisions, not them. This is the railroad bridge that, if you recall, this was going to be around, like an S-turn down to the county trail. I wanted to keep that in place because it would give us a great access to the trail if you wanted to head east. And also, you know, it's part of the history of the town, and it's owned by PICO. It's maintained by PICO because it's a major gas line that goes across it. It was designed for locomotives, and it's being used for a trail. So the reason there was some discussion this evening over the last couple of weeks about this bridge is the county, because it no longer connects this trail to the trail here, they don't want to be part of it. They say it's called a trail access, and therefore, we should own it, or the borough should take dedication. We obviously could take, we can maintain it, but it's, obviously, it could be a borough amenity that hopefully, if we fix it up nicely enough, you'll take the dedication to it. But it wouldn't mean you have to maintain the bridge. PICO is going to maintain that. Obviously, if PICO doesn't maintain it, you're worried about it 20 years from now. You'd have to close it off. But right now, I know that for PICO to move that gas line, it would cost them probably a million dollars because they can't hang it from this bridge. We've already looked at doing that. This PennDOT bridge wasn't designed for it. So there's an awful lot of issues. PICO, in my opinion, that's not going to go anywhere for a long time, but obviously, it's got a lot of life left in it. We would maintain the surface and paint it up and do whatever we could, but we're not going to, we can't rebuild it. We're not going to rebuild it. It would cost too much money. So that, so this will be maintained, and we have an access, a little sidewalk that goes to it like this. So then you have trail access here, trail access to here. If you eliminate this bridge or this ramp structure, that would give you some, give you some more money to improve the riverfront, and that's pretty much in a nutshell as far as the changes. Other than just going higher, it's the same exact plan, plus these changes that we're talking about this evening.
So Bob, you were back when you first proposed this.
Yes.
Am I hearing this right? The neighbors are still getting that parking, right? Correct?
Yes. Yes, they're still getting 20 spaces here. That's not going to change. That won't change. I wouldn't have the guts to ask for that. What we only, the only thing we asked for is, before, and many of you were here that night, I know when we, there was raised about the cross-easement across the entire property. At the time, we thought we could do it. We had a couple of different tenants who were interested. They don't have much leverage, a bunch of different tenants don't have a lot of leverage. But, you know, one Fortune 50 company has a lot of leverage, and if, we're happy to do it, they're willing to do it. I just don't want to ruin the deal over that. But the 20 spaces are there. We're providing 20 spaces, and there's no thuds or buts about that. Nobody's going to question that. It's just the, it's just the right to go all over the place, all times a day, and we're just, we want to make sure that's.
The neighborhood needs that parking.
Absolutely, and that's why we're not, we're not, you know, we're not taking that away from you. There's more slides, which I think are just redundant. I don't think, you know.
So all your calculations of what you're going to, it's about a million bucks, right?
About a million dollars.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, of cour, I mean, if you're talking about dollars out of our pocket, you know, we agreed to do, to pay half a million dollars for offsite improvements, but it was credited against any cost. The cost of the intersection of Fayette and Elm Street has gone through the roof. PennDOT does that to you. It's now probably $750,000. It's way above the 500. On top of that, the 352 was originally designed because we had 352 apartments years ago, and we just didn't want to take that off the table. We said, "Look, we'll give you, we'll continue to give you the $1,000 a unit with this office." On top of that, we have open space, trail improvements, $102,000 for the fee in lieu of the comfort station, the $200,000 for the fee in lieu of another park or whatever, and also possibly $100,000 or more for the ramp removal. And so you do the math. I mean, it's over a million. And on top of that, there's a $3 million surplus every year to the school district, the county, and the borough. It's one of those once-in-a-lifetime opportunities. I would urge you to approve the plan if you could. Your staff has been tremendous in trying to get us to the point where we think we can get this done, and I'm hopeful that Borough Council finds this to be a benefit to the community.
So what can you tell us regarding the potential tenant? How far along is this just contingent? And if you could meet their requirement for the additional, what was it, 75,000 square feet? What, how many are leased?
I'll tell you as much as I can tell you. I'm not in part of the negotiations, and I mean, I think Stephanie could tell you that. I wasn't invited to some of the deep discussions because you have to sign all kinds of confidentiality agreements, of course. But I can tell you what I've heard, and that is that we're going to find out soon. I mean, there was, we were supposed to find out last week, two weeks ago. I'm now told today, maybe it'll be tomorrow. Clearly, we're the number-one spot. They may opt not to pull the trigger right now, but if they're going to, if they want to pull the trigger, there's nobody who can deliver like we can, only because we're the only game in town in this borough. There's somebody in Upper Maryland that thinks they can do it, but I don't think they can. And there might be a couple of people in the borough who think they can, but there's no way they can get a PennDOT. They might get your approval in a couple of nights, but they won't get PennDOT, NPDS, planning modules through all the state agencies as fast as they can. So we're the only people who could deliver on their current need for occupancy in 2020. They want to occupy in 2020. That means we've got to start construction this summer. And we've already spent significant money, just starting to design the plans. We're doing a lot, we're spending a lot of money that you'll never see until this thing gets pulled, but we have engineering documents underway, structural engineering. If they tell us no, we've just wasted a lot of money. But if they tell us yes, you know, we're in good shape to continue to deliver. Unfortunately, wish we would have known a month ago because the schedule gets compressed as they delay, but hey, we're happy to let them wait as long, as long as they pick us, we're happy to take the deal, you know? So it will be a very, very long-term deal, a very, very long-term deal. They're not going to take this 400,000 square feet in it. So it'll be here for a long time, and some of you may know more than I do because I know they may have reached out to some of you. Hopefully, they have, but if they haven't, unfortunately, I don't have much more information. I know who they are, but I'm sworn to secrecy, and I prefer not to say it.
Bob, in terms of the trail system at the top of the property.
Yeah.
What portions, just so that I know, for purposes of the resolution, which portions are you proposing to maintain?
I'll give you, I'll give you this next slide here. I think I.
Oh, wonderful. Okay.
This is, this is the area where the bridge is. The bridge is basically from here to there, and then there's a short section across the bridge that goes to a property line. So this would be, this is an easement right now that the county has. Okay? And they're willing to assign that easement to the borough or vacate it. I'm not sure. They might. I'm not sure PICO would say, "We'll give it to a private landowner." They might, I don't know. But this bridge carries, and you can go out there anytime you want, and you'll see a heavy, a major, like it's an eight-inch gas main that goes across it. It's really, it's there for that purpose. Our original plan was to remove it, but PICO wouldn't let us, Amtrak and PICO said, "You can't remove it." So that's why I came back with, "Let's preserve it." But if we could maintain this or dedicate this to, not dedicate it, but can they assign this easement that would keep this in place? We would fix it up any way you want it, and then we'd build this all new. This would be a new sidewalk that would go into the property. This would be a new access to the bridge that we could maintain or dedicate, whatever you want. But this is all new. Yellow is new. Green is existing, and I know that we talked about us maintaining the trail surface. My only concern is I can't, I don't think PICO would even expect me to replace the bridge, but painting it up and doing stuff like that would be something which is certainly in our wheelhouse, and we're willing to do. And that would give us another, I mean, if that bridge, I mean, it was designed for railroads, it's, if it lasts another 100 years, great. 100 years, I'll be gone, I think. And if that's the case, maybe at that point, we have to change, swap it around, but, so that's that point, and I'm, I'll take, I can take the trail maintenance a long year if you want, or you can take the whole thing, and we'd give it, we'd dedicate it to you the way you typically would. Yeah, right.
So council, tonight, what you're going to do to try to keep this organized, should you wish to grant land development approval, you would adopt the resolution as drafted, and then that would be, that would be one vote, and then as a second vote, you would approve the height bonus? That notification will go out in a cover letter from my office to the applicant so they can share it with the tenant, should they choose. The height bonus as currently proposed would include two things. One, currently, the land in Plymouth Township in Resolution 2015-12, you have the right to a conservation easement over that property. The applicant is now agreeing to offer that for dedication, and I believe, Lou, you said offer it for dedication for up to two years? Is that correct?
Yeah, we said two years for this reason. If you opt not to, we just don't want to hold on to it. The county wants it, and they would, we want to do something with it. But I didn't want to force you to say, "You got to decide in six months." I think two years is a reason, you'll decide in two years what you want to do with it, I think. If you want three, I'll give you three. I mean, it's just a question of, I just don't want to go after too long and also give the county something to look forward to if they ever decide to. Is two years enough? Great. If it's not, again, I'm not hung up on two years.
Yeah, in terms of, I mean, I would recommend to council that if they did want to do something with the property, we should talk about it sooner rather than later, so two years should be fine. And then the second piece of the height bonus would be either an improvement or a fee in lieu in the amount of $200,000. Bob said 204.
Yeah, 200, I said twice as much, so I already, am I under oath?
That's my mistake.
It was one, two, so we'll go two, I'll say, we'll double, 204,000.
All right. Well.
We'll take the four bucks.
I'll take you for, I'll take you for your word.
204,000.
So that would be, that would be what's before council this evening. So first, if you choose to approve the resolution, you would do that first. It's prepared and appropriate for your consideration, and then the second would be a vote on the height bonus.
Do I have a motion for the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you very much.
And then the second.
Hope to see you guys soon with that. You know what? They tell me to shut up when I can, you know?
The second, the second vote for council this evening is the approval of a height bonus of 25 feet for a maximum of 135 feet on the, 135 feet on the property, and that would be for a public amenity, twofold. One, the offer of dedication of the Plymouth Township land for up to two years, and two, a fee in lieu in the amount of $204,000.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Okay, thank you. Lou, I'll get you a letter tomorrow so that you have it available for the tenant.
Thanks very much for all your.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Stephanie, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yep. Keep your fingers crossed.
Oh, we so will.
That's one tenant, whole building.
Yes. Well, good for you, too.
Yes, good for, good for all of us all around. Good evening.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the presentation on the MS-4 permit pollutant reduction plan. Just to tee this conversation off, the borough is required to submit a notice of intent to the DEP. That notice of intent was sent on September 16th of 2017 by the deadline. However, our previous engineer failed to also submit the actual pollutant reduction plan that goes along with the notice of intent. So Ms. McNair has put together a strategy that, from an administrative perspective, we are very comfortable with. Mr. Sokolowski took the initiative to call and request an extension on behalf of the borough, which was granted. So we actually have until August to meet this deadline, so a big thank you to both Karen and Ray for making that happen. So what is in front of you this evening is an informational presentation so you're aware of this MS-4 permit renewal requirement. This is a general engineering expense that is extensive, but thankfully, Karen, again, has developed a plan and a timeline that allow us to meet the requirement and meet the deadline. So, Karen, if you want to elaborate and explain, that would be much appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, to start off, I'm not sure of the last time you had an MS4 presentation. So, MS4 stands for municipal separate storm sewer systems. So, the permit renewal, Stephanie said, was submitted by the September 16th deadline, and it continues your requirements for the six minimum control measures, which are public education and outreach, public participation and involvement, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site stormwater runoff control, post-construction runoff control, and pollution prevention slash good housekeeping. So, all that, this permit allows you to discharge your stormwater into waters of the Commonwealth. So, it's a very necessary permit. If you don't have it, I'm not sure what would happen. Nobody's tried that before. So, this is very important to keep up with these requirements. And as part of this new permit cycle, which is for five years, starting the 16th, there was a new requirement, which was for the pollutant reduction plan. And as part of that, the, it's too small, I'm sorry, the DEP identified the Plymouth Creek as being impaired for sediment. So, that had nothing to do with any criteria that we came up with, but it was set by the DEP. And they have a chart that was available, and it's very small, I'm sorry, but I highlighted the Plymouth Creek and the sediment. So, what the plan must show is how the borough will reduce the sediment loads by 10% over the next five years, so within this permit cycle. So, the Plymouth Creek watershed is this area that's outlined in red. That's from GIS mapping. So, that's the area that we have to show that you can reduce your sediment loads by 10%.
On the west side?
Yeah, I think it's the east side.
So, it's on the east side.
Right, so the area that's outlined in green down the bottom, and then the area outlined in cyan, we don't have to worry about, we don't have to look at for this pollution reduction plan. It's just the area outlined in red.
So, the area outlined in red, I think it was the west side. Isn't that Suckwith, Bob?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, the west side.
Oh, I can't sit.
Yeah. So, it's this area here.
Right, so it'll be the west side.
That is the west side, yeah.
Yeah.
At least they don't do anything on the west side.
So, this plan will be specific to the borough for the Plymouth Creek. All the plans have specific requirements that you must go through. There's an outline that you have to go through, but it is specific to the borough, because we have to calculate the loads that are in the Plymouth Creek for the sediment, come up with BMPs that would be specific to the borough, specific locations where we could put them, and show how we'll be reducing those loads in the five years, and come up with who will operate and maintain them, and any cost information for how you can get grants or pay for those BMP improvements. So, again, the plan is due by Sunday, August 12th. There is a requirement for public notice, so you have to, 45 days before the deadline, give public notice. There is a 30-day public comment period, so before this would get approved and submitted to the DEP, we would have to come back to counsel and present the plan. So, it's not like it'll just go off to the DEP without input from the borough, borough staff, and council, and the public as well. And that's my presentation. Do you have any questions for me tonight?
How much is that permit?
How much is the permit? I don't think, I think you pay like a $500 application fee, but it's more the-
Right, it's the pollutant, it's the actual plan.
Yeah, the six minimum control measures, keeping up with that, and then what you'll need to do as far as the BMPs and implementing the BMPs over the five years, that's really the cost to the borough for the permit itself.
What would be some examples of reducing sedimentation?
So, some of the things we've done for other municipalities is you can install mostly basins, because you want to try, and what our strategy has been in other municipalities is to try and limit the number of BMPs that you have to install. So, we tried to do larger BMPs that we could capture a larger area. So, we did propose several basins, but if you want to do something smaller, it could be rain garden, vegetated swales, anything that's really going to capture an area and let the water infiltrate into the ground, have the sediment settle out before they're getting into your storm sewer system.
Thank you.
Just to give you an idea from a cost standpoint, to expedite this process and to actually meet the requirements, the DEP, you're looking about in the range of not to exceed of $30,000. When I say this is an extensive undertaking, this is an extensive undertaking, since the notice of intent was sent in without the actual plan.
So, we got to bet?
Sorry?
We got to do it?
We have to do it, right.
So, you need a motion of approval?
It actually fits in with your general engineering expenditure line item.
Okay.
It's just, you know, money that you had allocated, given the fact that we switched to Gilmore and Associates. This is something that your borough engineer would be doing on a regular five-year basis?
Yes, yep.
Yes.
So, this is informational, only for your-
Okay. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Consent.
Would you like to do that?
Sure, I'll do it. Next item on the consent agenda is the consent agenda. The only item on there is to approve the February-ending treasurer's report and accounts payable in the amount of $665,126.99. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
You're welcome. On unfinished business, consider authorizing an advertisement for a hearing to adopt the comprehensive plan, and to send the comprehensive plan out to the reviewing agencies as required by the PA MPC.
So, I'd just like to introduce Judy Stern-Goldstein, who has served as our consultant for the Comprehensive Plan Task Force. Thank you for all of the work that you've done, kept us on track, and actually got us to the point where we have a draft comprehensive plan.
Yes.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank the borough for letting us work on this project. It's been a very fun project. We enjoy this type of work, and you've had a very active comprehensive plan task force, and some council members working with us in addition to borough manager. And the borough manager's assistant, Brittany, has been great at getting everything up and out to everybody. So, it's been a very good process. It had some bumps, there were some delays based on getting some surveys back, some meetings that needed to get rescheduled, but everyone pulled together, and I think we're right about on schedule. So, what we're asking for you tonight is to authorize advertising of the draft comp plan. There's been a lot of public input so far, but as part of the advertising, you'll go through the formal adoption process. We've had eight task force meetings, a road tour, a visioning meeting, the national survey, or the survey that went out, the real estate forum, and on, what's that?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't say visioning, I'm sorry. The visioning meeting, that was a lot of fun, actually. And then on March 5th, the Comprehensive Plan Task Force did recommend that council authorize the advertising. So, that would start the process. The hearing date, I believe, would be June 6th. The plan would need to go out to your planning commission, the county planning commission, the school district, and the contiguous municipalities. There's a 45-day period in which they can comment and send the comments in. That's all during the same process time, and then we would have a formal public hearing.
Need a motion?
No, I was going to ask for a motion.
I don't argue.
I would like to make a motion to advertise the comprehensive plan.
I can have a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And next time I see you, you'll have a little PowerPoint and the full presentation.
That would be wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next thing on unfinished business is considering approving a St. Patrick's Day parade proclamation with Mayor Aronson.
I'm going to read it, if that's okay.
Yes.
So, unfortunately, prior to the parade, there was a snowstorm, and we had to reschedule our meeting to the week after the parade. So, we are, this is a catch-up item. The parade was a success, so Mayor, thank you for reading this proclamation.
Sure, so we'll just pretend we have not had that wonderful parade. And I want to thank Joe Collins and members of the AOH, who helped with all the history in the proclamation, making sure it was all accurate. Whereas, the borough of Conshohocken was incorporated in 1850 with the help of 658 Irish immigrants. And whereas, residents of Irish heritage have served the borough of Conshohocken as council members, mayors, tax collectors, and as part of Conshohocken's first planning commission. And whereas, the ancient order of Hyberians of the Notre Dame Division 1, and the Ladies' Ancient Order of Hyberians, Division 2, have sponsored the St. Patrick's Day Parade since 1992. And whereas, the borough of Conshohocken has hosted this, the only St. Patrick's Day Parade in Montgomery County since 2006. And whereas, more than 30 Conshohocken businesses, organizations, and charities have participated in the first annual Irish Week celebrations from March 3rd, 2018, to March 10th, 2018. Now, therefore, I, Yanni Varonson, mayor of the borough of Conshohocken, Pennsylvania, on behalf of the members of borough council and the citizens of Conshohocken, do hereby proclaim March 10th, 2018 AD, the 12th anniversary of the Montgomery County St. Patrick's Day Parade in Conshohocken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve the parade proclamation by Mayor Aronson.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Under new business, we have, consider appointing a board member to the Friends of Conshohocken Parks.
At the December 20th, 2017 council meeting, council appointed the following individuals to serve on the board of the Friends of Conshohocken Parks. It was Bob Frost, Bob Cauchy, and Todd Camden. Todd Camden has since notified the borough that he is unable to serve as a board member due to a conflict with his professional employer. Therefore, there is an opening on the Friends of Conshohocken Parks, which is delaying the ability to actually send the information in and get the organization up and running. We have found an individual who has expressed interest in being on this Friends of Conshohocken Parks. Her name is Cindy Webb. Councilmember Flanagan, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add?
I did meet with Cindy Webb, and she is very enthusiastic about utilizing this vehicle as part of our cultural initiative and restoring Marriwood Park House and the community center. So, that was our discussion, and she readily accepted the challenge to be on the board.
So, if you are so inclined tonight, you would consider making a motion to appoint Cindy Webb as a board member of the Friends of Conshohocken Parks?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Rod Eastburn of my office will be thrilled. He asks me almost daily whether or not I have this resolution for him, so thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to consider approving Resolution 2018-07, approving a supplemental appropriation to the fiscal year 2018 annual budget for storm sewer televising. At the March 14th meeting, Ms. McNair made a presentation relative to the addition to the infrastructure plan for storm sewer televising. Since then, the borough has moved forward with the recommendation to utilize trenchless pipe solutions to complete this service for a cost not to exceed $84,000. In utilizing the, some internal resources, we were able to decrease the professional services provided by Gilmore with a not to exceed to $16,000. Again, the televising would focus on the east side of the borough, but it would continue to other areas if time permits. Again, this is a pivotal part of the infrastructure plan, and the supplemental appropriation in front of you tonight is to actually utilize funds from the Grants Capital Improvements line item and Capital Fund line item 18458700, and make a transfer to the Capital Line Item Engineering Infrastructure and Storm Water, which is line item 18403313. And again, this is a not to exceed of $100,000. And to clarify, we are not dipping into any reserves. We are re-appropriating money that is already allocated in the capital budget for a use that we feel is appropriate and necessary at this time.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Last item on the agenda is the insurance. Again, you had two presentations this evening, one from Mr. Pugeli from Brown &amp; Brown, and one from Mr. Solars from Divit. You had an opportunity to listen to both entities present. You've also had an opportunity to ask questions and answers relative to the proposals that are in front of you for consideration this evening. Again, our renewal date is April 1st, so tonight, we need a decision. And then, with whatever you authorize me to do, we will spend the next week finalizing those options to make sure the borough is insured as of April 1st. So, at this time, I would just need a decision or any additional conversation, whether you would like to go with Brown &amp; Brown, and if so, the Travelers or the combined Oregon and Brick Street. If you'd like to move away from Brown &amp; Brown, then the alternative option would be to go with Divit.
Anyone from council have a motion on either?
I would make the motion to secure coverage through Divit.
And is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
With that being the decision of council, then the process and the next steps are that you would have to authorize the borough manager to finalize the insurance renewal process with Delaware Valley Trust for the April 1st renewal date with written notice of the borough's intent to join both trusts. In essence, I need authorization to submit that written notice to Divit.
I'll make that motion to authorize.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I also need a motion to authorize the borough manager to advertise two ordinances, which authorize the participation of the borough in the property and liability and workers' compensation trusts for an April 4th adoption. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The last motion I'd ask you to consider is authorizing the borough manager to issue a broker-of-letter record to Porter and Curtis to renew the volunteer firefighter workers' comp through SWIF. So, this is the last remaining broker of letter that is on record with Cohen &amp; Cohen.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and then the last item of business you should know is that, in addition to approving the ordinances on the 4th, you will also have to sign the property and liability and workers' compensation trust agreements. So, that's one of the last items on your agenda regarding your insurance. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cheka. Anyone for public comment? One more thing, I think Ms. Flanagan has an announcement.
Yes, I wanted to share with everyone, I received a phone call today from Mr. Omar on East 6th Avenue, and he requested I publicly pass along his thanks to the borough crew for all the great work they did. And in fact, his quote was, "The guys did a hell of a job. Please tell them we said thank you." He said he was talking to his other neighbors, everybody was out cleaning their cars off, and they said, "This has been a tough winter, but our borough crew really pulled through for the whole town, so thank you to all of them."
Anyone else on council?
So, heading back to St. Patty's Day and Irish Week, we had a benefit concert at the VFW, and we were able to raise over $600, which will go to Colonial Neighborhood Council, the VFW Auxiliary, and the Conshohocken Police Association. So, I wanted to invite all of you and any residents listening to the VFW on Saturday at 12 o'clock for a check ceremony, and I've invited our police force and members of CNC to join us, so it should be a really, really nice event.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stokely?
I'd just like to say something about the storm. When the mayor has a snow emergency, it means a lot. When people don't come out and they stay home, things move, things get done. So, I mean, hopefully, we're not going to have any more storms, but next year, I mean, if people, when they can stay home, stay home, because, like I said, things get done faster and people get back to work.
I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the hard work that our borough staff and our borough manager did in the work for the insurance. We had a short time period where we needed to figure stuff out, and I think that a year ago from today, we were told by Rich Manfredi, the borough manager, that we would never be able to get to Divit anywhere close to three to five years. And you and your team took that and actually made it happen in basically one year, or less than one year. So, I want to thank you, Stephanie, for leading that up, and your team for supporting you and being able to get that done. and your team for supporting you and being able to get that done. So I'm very proud that-
Tina took it, so I'm, I'm good. Ike?
Talking about Bob said about the snow. I feel these people, when we get this snow, they come out and they clean their cars, and nobody cleaned their roof. I'm riding down the street today, in the back of a car, and what comes off the roof? A whole pile of snow. It's very dangerous, and it's against the law. I just hope people, when they clean their car, clean everything, not just the windshield so they can see. That's all.
I think I would just add to what Tina said, and to further, I guess, embarrass Stephanie. But because Jane, Anita, and I attended a seminar, and I met the one gentleman here, and he was talking about the effort that Stephanie has put forth, and that previously, it just wasn't the same. So he put it in much more polite, professional terms, or said that you were that way, but kind of essentially just took the bull by the horns, and there was no saying no to you. So I, I, it's, it's, I, I know, I don't, I don't want to make it, but it's, it's really-
Thank you, thanks, appreciate it. I couldn't do it without everybody that you have on your staff, so, and you, and the, the whole team.
And, and I can speak for all of council, and I say we all truly appreciate all of your hard work and effort, and that of the staff. So if I could, without embarrassing you, I would say that everyone could clap, but-
No, let's, we did, we said enough for her.
So on that note, I will just go with meeting adjourned.